...the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll second that motion.
I'm second person.
The change to Graves is paid in a debt. To make a motion that we approve the July twenty-third bills to pay?
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We got a property, private water line, trailer, flat, urban, half-way.
There's also one, okay. Like a man, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's so far away, like that's it.
We still have an issue down there, I think.
So this is, it's been a private line for a long time. I reached out to somebody who was on past you guys, and he had wanted it attached onto, was told it was a private line, that he couldn't. Uh, so he drilled a well. I believe that the town responsibility ends at the master meter, right? See if we can get any guidance here, just to make sure. I'm just seeking legal guidance here, make sure I'm not your speaker.
You're what? I couldn't hear you.
Uh, incorrectly, the town's responsibility ends at the master meter.
And how is that? How can a private person put a line over your other people's property? Only utility companies have access, they have right of ways. You go down through other people's properties to get to ours.
If we own the property all the way through the master meter, I could see that.
I mean, at some point in time, I don't know when they were installed, but they had to have an easement for use to be able to put the meter, or to put the line through. So, at this point in time.
But has the paperwork on that? Because we were never informed that was a private line until this issue here just happened.
But, it's my understanding that it had to be a private line because we're only obligated to, to install up to the corporate limits of the town of Gosport. It's my understanding that this is outside the corporate limits.
The leak's in the, in the town limits.
Pardon me?
The leak's in the town limits. Because my property line is the town line.
So... I guess the, the question at this point in time is, do you believe that since you get water service from the town of Gosport, that we're automatically obligated to provide piping not only up to the meter, but beyond in order to be able to service your home? Is that your position?
Just to my meter at the house, that's all I expect you guys to cover is to my meter, and my meter to me is me.
I guess we're just a little confused because we just thought that it would have been, we didn't, we were just unaware. So then we were just so completely, like, you know, surprised, that's all. Surprised, because we just didn't know, so, I mean.
That has nothing to do with installing it.
Yeah, well, I, yeah. We just have, like, regular expectations, you know, nothing like crazy, I don't feel, but, um... I don't know, we, like, sometimes we work together, we figure something out. I don't know, I, I understand by the lines, but we're just so unaware and, like, I'm just completely taken by surprise, but.
Yeah, we gotta go rent, rent, uh, thing, the, uh, broom out, so we can take showers.
Okay. Master meters way on up there. Town of Gosport's corporations are over here on the other side of Gray's Estate. And there, the outskirts of your town limits, that should be yours. We should be responsible for that all the way up to there. We want a new water line. Graves Estates is a hell of a lot closer than down here, a thousand feet away. You're expecting us to find a line, delete, and fix a line that runs a half a mile.
So did you deny your neighbor?
Graves Estates is probably there, it may only be, uh, uh, three hundred feet to have to dig up or replace whatever. That's my question. That's your master meter, your master meter needs to move up here, close to our property. If the town limit has a corporation, town property runs all the way over here to the other side of Gray's Estate. That should be on the city of Gosport, extend their master meter on.
Did you deny your neighbor access to that line though?
I asked him, no.
The new neighbor.
Oh, the new neighbors?
Oh, he put a proposition, he wanted us to give him part of our land.
Well, just that he's not able to connect to the.
He added this, this writing, because I read the writing. He wanted us to give him twenty feet, all the way going down through there, halfway down our driveway, to him, to put a water line in. And I thought, I am not giving you this land. To put, that's how it was written, I mean. Yeah, it was nothing in there about an easement. And it was to be done at no compensation. Yeah, that's what was written to give to me.
Easement's worth of compensation. Duke runs power lines through my property.
Yeah, they run your line to you.
Any out of it.
Yeah. The way it was worded, it wasn't for easement. It was for him to get twenty feet, coming from our meter, down, going down the roadway, halfway, to give to him. So he could put a water line on, through there. And I said, no. And he never gave back with anything else.
I was told it was all drawn up by an attorney, and they had the plan all drawn up, and everything.
There was dates on there, wrong, care, it was dated incorrectly, so if an attorney did that, it was a crappy attorney did. Because I could point out to him, I said.
We were.
He said it was not correct, and I said, no. And he never gave back after that.
I'm seeing fixed non-line, a private line. But I'm not fixing the line from the master meter at a half a mile.
Now, at the end of the city corporation, the city limits, which ends there, probably from my property, we have a sign in Gosport that sits on our property. And I've complained about that before.
Yeah.
Because it's in the way of us moving.
The sign sitting there must be yours, probably, and the line won't be good up to my meter. That's where my meter is, out here at the highway, because there's that line, that sign.
Definition of private line, Jackson?
After the master meter, regardless of where the master meter is.
But did I have?
And it gave me the move, and that.
So then that means anybody else that's on this line going this, the other direction?
Right.
And feeds up, they're responsible from the master meter?
Yes, out of Smith Road, out to Lingle, on the master meter is a private line.
Can we discuss cooking in somewhere closer? Like, if we have to dig, I mean, is this up an option? Like, what are our options?
Graves Estates, so.
So if I board to Graves Estates, do I got to pay a hookup fee again?
If we get permission to go through, then there's already water running to that court back there.
Right.
Nice warning.
But if I board.
That should make the most sense to go back in there.
Yeah.
Right. But would I have to pay a thousand dollar hookup fee? No. I mean... So.
I have questions too about that, like, I just wanted, I just feel like, we need to be told, like, I don't know, you know, we can do that, have a line board and things like that, but I want to know. And, you know, I want everyone to know I'm not, like, responsible for any other. I don't know, I just feel like this is, might be like the, what do you mean?
Something to define, something, concept.
Yeah, right, yes, I would like.
Definition.
But if we did board, I mean, went from my house to there, is that gonna be your guys', or that's gonna be private? Are you gonna put a master meter down there?
It's on town. But it leaves town, it wasn't leave Gray's Estate, right? But if the cul-de-sac took off from there, that leaves the town limits, or does it?
Then leave the town limits, when it gets on the problem.
Instant before ours.
Yeah.
So then could the meter right there at the end of the property, that you have to look into that meter?
Yeah, if that meter's on, it'd be our responsibility, like, most utility companies. From your meter to your house, which is yours, on the other side of the meter is the utility companies. That's how it normally happens.
Just get it as far as it can stay inside property, the first meters, and you will give that? You get charged the water that comes through?
I got a hook up on my driveway, right now. I got a meter number on my driveway, though.
Because it just terminates responsibly.
There's three of them, two of them match.
I mean, if the leak is, if the leak is within the city, if it's fixed.
They put it in.
I hope they would.
So, you know, for base Indiana, okay.
To dig up the line from the meter all the way out until we discover where we ended up.
It's galvanized.
It's galvanized. It's a galvanized line.
And maybe put back in, changes.
That's another, start testing the galvan, it's gonna keep breaking all the way down, it's gonna keep going. And it's what? I really like this, give the city water, I mean.
We don't have, we don't commission if we have an easement. And I'm just assuming someplace in hinterlands, there's some, some evidence of, of them giving us an easement, or an easement by necessity to be able to, to put in those things. I, I just think that if you decide that you're going to go in and start digging and installing and getting permissions, isn't, isn't going to be made or.
Unless somebody says no.
Well, I guess.
I think three homes on my cul-de-sac, middle, just, I mean.
Yeah, three, three north towards the.
I think that we, I mean, if we could put on there, I think it would pretty much ride the property line. Um, but I don't, I don't have a plat map, I can't say that for certain. But there are two homes there, like, in the corner, and what I would assume, we could probably do something like somewhere close to the property line? I mean, hopefully they would be kind enough to let us do that, but we.
Put everything back to the way it was.
Right, of course.
If you're asking, you're trying to, you have to take care of it.
Right.
It's just a matter of getting permission, you know, building a line down there to where, what's going on, always run through here.
Like, right.
To affect them.
Yeah. I don't even know who they are, like, we used to know who they lived with, I don't know.
Yeah, they have the one, moving over there.
I don't know who it is.
They saw the territory time, both places. It costs a board, and I don't really give a board.
We like to stick to ours. But we can do that, I mean.
Right, yeah, I had a leak before my meter, and it got fixed two, three years ago.
Town fixed it.
Yeah, very nice, that's what I complained about, that's, it was very nice.
Somebody's getting in trouble.
Yeah, yeah. Because I was told that they were responsible for not either two of us. But, thank you, it's, I really appreciate it.
I'd like to know where the leak is now.
Me too, I, I think so.
We should get it fixed. It's galvanized, it's galvanized, and it should.
And there's no way that that could be, like, as long as all the other galvanized stuff is. You're pressing on the brad, but.
Leaky's trying to, to work on something like that, but I don't, I don't know what the grant says.
The wording, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a galvanized one, but it runs.
And it's just been for.
Jackson.
We've tried to redirect.
It's a, to the, to the, to the, to the house. They, 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 yeah. That's somebody related to town, and they should take it away, and they have to analyze it.
Well, it's your, my meter, the house, yeah, just charge me. Just like the meter.
Right, it's our meter, so it's, it's.
Yeah, that we're not, we're not saying that, but, yeah. Because I, I mean.
And, yeah, I'd be able to go, I know, walk the line. Should show itself, should show itself.
You can come to Graves Estates, street your house, and on down to my house.
Do it like that?
I'll pay for my share from there on. I'm not paying for a galvanized line that runs for a half a mile, all the way up there, that's gonna be subject to leaking every time you turn around, fifty years old, laying in the ground, rusting. I'm not gonna be responsible and not paying five thousand dollars every year to fix the water. Now, if you come out of Graves Estates, and we'll pay you half a mil, I'll pay you half a line, a new line, one line meter, and that's fine. But other than that, if you're gonna make me come all the way up to here, and we're gonna have issues, I'm gonna call void. Plain and simple. I'm not gonna be responsible for a line that's a half a mile long, going through other people's property, that's subject to be leaking, and developing leaks every time you turn around.
I, I can understand if we own the property all the way to the master meter. I'd give it that.
Go from Graves to board underground all the way down to his house, like they're doing up there.
Board to the property line.
Huh?
For the property.
From the city, from the city limits. Yeah, I'd pay for that, for my meter.
We have to apply for.
We're talking about, I'm talking about, shooting across the ground, facing the, always in town.
That's my property line.
Yeah, called to get property line.
Hey. Thirty-one feet to here, and property limits, so. Seven, not daily board to there, you know? I don't know.
So, his property, his property.
As soon as we were over that, and then entirely there.
I think it's.
The first is very close, and the last is far.
I'd be good with that.
Across the property, yeah, the line was, and we, we asked people to do that, we had.
We didn't.
Uh, can you find out who that is?
Well, I was, I was trying to, I was trying to. Well, because ours was only a quarter, we don't have a larger plan, so. Well, they want you to, for, for scraping, why you're applying to, and things like this.
We don't know who that is.
And it's not a property, so we can't go march something, or we don't, interlocate, it's another.
Shit.
I don't know. But that, that, that'll tell you where my, but, but, we know they're marching. Not on our.
I haven't walked on the last property, I think that's true.
Well, if they're somewhere over here in the house, we're just not ready.
It's bad. It's a bad way. It's a bad way. Meter, I mean, not meters, yeah. Should show itself.
Well, there's a, that means that runs down, actually, not too far up here, it runs along the highway. Oh, I know, and then it ends up, or going across sixty, so that hundred sixty seven, um, in respect. I think the right.
In the meantime, I'm looking.
It's that, also, even totally big, I'm sorry. Okay, so, if you're, if it's that, bringing water, everywhere, you know, when you, you, you have it, like, watering. When you put that, ask into it, that that means, so, where, you know, should march, right? On, okay, you would, like, you said, I don't, I, I think I heard that. I didn't know what I was talking about, I was gonna leave, but not on there. So that was very.
So that was my. And they survived, like they're little, and they just like, I have a space door. We put a guard pod in that would be effortless, and we only had these as big pumps, so. We had to put everything into the pool, and we didn't wait for it, so. We wanted to see though, there's a little problem, and I just transferred all this back to the pump and get it done. They're, they're made it now, they, they stand on the edge of.
It doesn't get you.
Yeah. They're little, so if you had that. They were like, okay, they were like that. So I don't, I don't. And they were bad. But if, so we probably have to help you. We have some big limits. Pretty. It works. Because they have. Well, the truth, they don't have any water, because we're down on the back side there. You know that we'd be bad, the turbo will run down. To turn off the tank on the, there's a turbo, we had one. They say. If that. That would be that.
Are we sure it's a galvanized line from master to estate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we want to get rid of the galvanized line, just an ideal, kind of a compromise between the two parties. The town tie and what the master uses that, move the master meters to the corporate line, and then let them take it from there. That, from there on, that's their problem.
And that's where Gray's Estates was a great idea, cause that's the closest spot, the less line after running anywhere.
Yeah, but then you're gonna have a dead master meter that's still nothing here.
Yeah, but it's galvanized line passed it anyway, we could abandon it, just like we're doing the other galvanized lines.
Just pull that master meter out, take it over there. And then to ban this on and reinstall it.
Yeah, two other master meters as well, so we could. Three of them.
So.
So if I wasn't going past my city, but.
Right, put it right on.
By the wall, the kind of one.
Right, put it right on. Yeah, put it right on.
We have another, what, two more private lines on that?
We got too many private lines.
And if we put in a private line for you guys, we're gonna have to do it for them, and the town cannot afford that. So here's our compromise. We will put the master meter in if we can get an easement agreement with Gray's Estates. And from the master meter on, it's you guys' responsibility. And it's gonna have to be put on your deeds, that it's owner.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Nobody said, hey, we'll put that in there and say, I have to take care of it, you got to take care of it.
So at this point, your offer is that you guys will handle these ones and then you will let us know, and at that point, we can have.
I can have one board.
From you.
As soon as we can. Our change, our change. Yeah, so, so are you guys gonna do the hookup if I have a board, or do I hook it up?
We would do the, we would do the connection.
To your main.
We'd have the back. We'd have the back up. Well, you're talking about meters from your house, right?
Right.
And Gray's Estates. No, I'm saying Gray's Estates.
Oh, from Gray's Estates to the.
I can board the line, you guys hook it up. I'll hook it up to my meter.
Yeah.
You guys hook it up.
Yeah, to the master. Yeah.
So that's natural with that. Where you guys decide. Right. Board, board, not, not on the tree, cause then it messes up the yard, if we board it. Don't mess anything.
We've just got a legal permission.
Right.
From Gray's Estates.
We'll go to the center of the courthouse, it's a town problem.
I'm, I'm good.
We were surprised.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I'm gonna have to agree to that.
It's, that's the legal option, we're just bringing the kids to the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We know.
Now, and I understand the question, does the water, do we have water water turned on, I understand that, can we have ours?
I already called it.
At least a couple hours a day.
I think you see.
Something.
If I did for that.
I've already got my cycle line of food buckets, the place toilets, I'm, I'm ready, but I'm, I'm asking if we just have, so I can start with like laundry and. Make sure. Yeah. We had, like, it's like water, and then all of a sudden, it's like, I get laundry, and it's nasty, or it's stained.
I can do it with that. That'll make.
From four P M to eight C M, does that sound good? Getting the water from one.
But I'll, I'll talk to you. You have two donkey's right for the water meters.
Do I? Yeah.
I believe so, I think that's what I heard earlier.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and there was some talk about like a four to eight o'clock. Uh, you turn it on.
It'd be great.
If we trusted to get it turned on.
I'll turn it back on, it'd be great with that.
If everybody coordinates together, then maybe it'll all work until we can get it fixed permanently.
I would definitely do that, so I'll turn it on, so if you guys give me permission to do that, I will do that.
And her seal up, nobody messes with it. We have an order to sit in the hand.
Right, I know, that's why I didn't want to do it. If you guys are good with it.
Turn it off.
Yeah, I'll send that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Till we get it fixed. Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Not official.
Okay.
Two couples, yeah, it was four hours.
So. I need to, at some point in time, I need to see what we're doing with proposing, specifically put this new. Master meter, so Troy or girls are going to be able to take me out there to show me where it is. And then we will. See whose property is, and then we will see what it takes to get. An easement to point that out, to be able to install a new master meter. With, with their permission, or I take it without their permission if necessary.
Yeah, I'll be right away.
And then we will work in agreement between the homeowners. Out there to hook on the new master meter to maintain the piping from the master meter.
To your.
To your, your house in perpetuity, so that that runs. With, with you and with your subsequent purchasers from you, that there's no misunderstanding about whose obligation it is to continue to maintain. That piping, I wanna work out the details and get all of you to sign off on that, so that we can get something that's recorded, so we don't.
Problem again.
Yeah. And, I mean, I think Donnie and Wanda both have all their numbers, I mean. Yeah, you know that.
Well, what I, what I wanna do is I'll go ahead and give you my name and telephone number, and it's either send me a text, send me a message with everybody's names and addresses and telephone numbers. So I can start moving this in right.
And you'll, you'll let us, no, we don't know what our name is. Well, I was, should we go? Should we go let them know that they will be, that you guys were gonna reach out to them?
Don't, let, let us.
Okay.
Just in, just in.
Sorry, I need very specific questions.
Okay.
Temporary line from meter to house.
Okay, we're going to Busisa Street, there's a water leak over there, and the water's off. And maybe. It didn't really ask, but I suggested that maybe they see if they could run temporary line on the ground, just like the other two people are. And she's said, we'll see if we can do that, it's not what she wants to do, she wants the line fixed, but it's another one of those deals where we check the matter day and it's gonna be replaced, so. From the meeting. So, she just wanted to know if she could have permission to, if it comes down to it.
Run the temporary line. Make a motion to let them run a temporary line from the meter to the house. All in favor?
Aye.
Sue her up, hey?
Nothing there.
Okay. Street, nothing.
No, we're waiting on this.
Fire.
I'm gonna be in and out of town for the next three weeks, so.
Where?
Well, next week I'm gonna start looking at a concert in Cincinnati Island, and the following Friday and Saturday, I got a Luke Coats concert, I got a man set, he's in the dinner hall, and. The weekend after that, I've got Luke Bryan and. Uh, Morgan Wallen, Zach Brown.
I will have tickets. Okay. Your business? Don't have any old business? What do you, Jack?
All right. I'll be quicker than the water problem, I promise you that. Uh, I, I sent you all a digital copy of the comprehensive emergency management plan, uh, it's been propagated by the commissioners and approved by the Spencer Town Board. And you guys are next, and as soon as I get your signatures, provided that I do, uh, we'll be ready to, uh. Get it approved by the clerk, get her signature, and then it'll be official. So, all I need is, um, skip the top line, cause that's Sheila's daughter, and then the next three are you guys. If I can get your signatures on that, if you have any questions about the plan or anything like that, I'd be happy to, happy to answer for it.
I'd like for them to make us a motion to approve the emergency plan.
Make a motion that the town approved the emergency plan?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
It was pretty much like the old, like, just up there.
Yeah.
Name, that information.
Yeah, yeah, before I got the first signature, it was already changed, so, uh, it's, it's constant. Yeah, there was very little language that was changed, it was mostly just contact and, and appointments. Thank you for your patience in finally getting to the agenda, I had, had a couple conflicts here in the previous meetings, so I appreciate you hanging in over there. All right, thank you all very much. Too busy for that. Have a good evening.
All right, we got a change order for the water plant. That's what this is.
Is it change order? For the grants.
It's the vision to the. Change order.
Yep. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's come to my attention, Scott's been employed for almost three years. And I feel he should get vacation paid five days and holiday paid. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody else?